Welcome all for anyone who may be watching or who watches later. The recording today is Monday, July 8th. We're beginning our work session for the Pleasantville Board of Trustees. Paul Alvarez and I are here in person. Trustee David Vinge Murray and Jamie Healy are participating remotely via Zoom for medical reasons. So we have four of us here. Trustee Nicole Asquith is away. So first on their agenda, welcome Seth. You and I and Nicole, right? Have been working on proposed energy audit and benchmarking for village facilities. And we have in our attachments, the Climate Action Plan proposal from E N Power Group. So take it away, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. First of all, I do want to thank all of you for this time tonight and the opportunity to share with you an update on one of these key projects that our Village Climate Smart Committee has been up to recently. I also want to give a special thanks to our trustee Nicole Asquith, who is obviously not here tonight. She has been an outstanding liaison to our committee and an invaluable source of guidance and support for all of our committee's work. So a special thanks to her tonight. As I'm sure all or most of you know, the primary purpose of the Climate Smart Committee is to engage with an ongoing process of maintaining Pleasantville's status as a certified climate smart community in New York State. So what does that mean? For a number of years now, New York State has operated a program called Climate Smart Communities that helps local governments reduce their greenhouse gas emissions and ultimately become more climate conscious and environmentally sustainable. Simply put, the program makes pots of grant money available to municipalities like ours to help facilitate a transition to clean energy. Of course, with a requirement that the community proves it's doing the work by tracking and documenting all the activity and actions we're taking to prove that we're putting that grant money to good use. Through the initial certification and periodic recertification cycles, the program works in a self-sustaining and ideally a steadily growing way, a growing model that the more we do to apply grant money to institute climate smart programs throughout the village, the more new grant money opportunities come about that we can then qualify for and utilize and so on. Our continued certification and bronze level or silver level status in the program is dictated by a point system. The various actions we undertake are worth various numbers of points. We track all this and submit it back to the state in the hopes of gradually boosting our numbers and elevating our status, receiving more money, et cetera, et cetera. A few quick examples of what we've been up to recently. You're probably all aware of our gas-powered lawn tool trade-in program, where we accept gasoline-powered mowers, weed whackers and the like. And we offer cash rebates back to village residents when they purchase new battery-powered tools. Really nice program. We've had a lot of success with that, pretty popular. We've also recently helped to fund the purchase of electric vehicles in the village, including a big new EV truck for Parks Department. And we host informational events, community forums and film screenings to help to promote the many local, state, national and global solutions that exist to fight this existential climate crisis that we face. All of that brings me to why I'm here tonight. One of the more significant actions that the state Climate Smart Program recommends in order to garner points and work towards higher level recertification is what's called an energy audit, a property energy audit. So basically what we're talking about here is conducting a thorough intensive survey of the village-owned properties, specifically including Village Hall, the Parks and Rec Office, GPW Building and Two Lake Street, and assessing the current carbon footprint of these buildings based on their current heating and cooling systems, quality of insulation, overall energy efficiency and other factors. Upon completion of such an audit, working with the village board and our relevant village departments, we would develop recommendations on how to go about reducing the carbon footprint of these buildings. Again, focusing primarily on heating and cooling, insulation perhaps, and achieving overall energy efficiency. In January, Nicole Asquith and I met with our village administrator, Mr. Morrissey, our building inspector, Mr. Hughes, and the heads of Parks and Rec and DPW, Mr. Newman, Mr. Carr, to discuss how best to proceed on this project. After some initial discussion, it was determined that the most feasible and realistic approach would be to hire an outside company that specializes in conducting these types of energy audits. We simply don't have the capacity or expertise. It was determined to go about this this type of audit on our own. And there are plenty of consultants and companies out there that make a common practice of doing these things like for municipalities like ours. At this point, we began seeking advice from relevant sources, including officials from other nearby municipalities as to whom we might consider hiring to conduct the audit. We also reached out to Sustainable Westchester, which you all probably know is an outstanding nonprofit organization based in Mount Kisco that promotes and supports efforts of all kinds to transition homes and businesses and local governments to clean, sustainable energy. After all this consultation, we ended up with a number of recommendations. We narrowed that list down to three or four that we then reached out to for information and ultimately seeking proposals. One was called LNS Services, based upstate in Clifton Park, New York. They were really unresponsive, very slow in getting back to us, really pulling teeth to just get responses to emails. And so that was a no-go. There were two other companies that we reached out to where we really had positive interactions. One was called Wendell Incorporated, based out in Hop Hog, and one's N Power Group, based in nearby White Plains, New York. Nicole and I set up meetings, met with both of these companies, received their proposals and ultimately got proposals in writing. Both meetings went well. And both of the proposals we got back included what we believe are the critical components of the work required to properly complete the building energy audits themselves within the stipulations of the New York State Climate Smart Communities Program, as well as specific recommendations to reduce the carbon footprint of these buildings based on the results of those audits. So these proposals include not just the audit themselves, but a subsequent set of recommendations on what we do next, next steps to ultimately reduce the carbon footprint of these properties, presumably reduce costs as well, heating and cooling costs, and make these properties and our village more climate conscious and environmentally sound. The Wendell proposal came in at $26,900. On the plus side, it seems that Wendell has more experience than Empower of working directly with the state agencies associated with the Climate Smart Communities Program, NYSERTA, DEP and elsewhere. DC, I should say. They are probably a little more familiar than the other bidders with the in and outs of the programs. With that said, Empower seemed to understand very clearly what we're looking for and also had adequate familiarity with the workings of the Climate Smart Program. Their initial proposal came in at $17,450. At this point, Mr. Morrissey inquired with them about providing a more competitive proposal that still maintained the key elements of the audit, as well as follow-up recommendations. Empower's subsequent proposal came back at $9,950. Just to clarify, doing the math here, 9950 is indeed less than 17,450 and 27,000.
That's a tough ask.
Well placed.
He's a tough negotiator.
Were services removed in some way to get to that number or not?
They cut around the edges.
Yes.
Some of the fluff, I think, by my estimate, was was cut out. I think there are probably less on-the-ground hours involved.
Yes.
But but all the essentials are there.
Great.
At this time, it is the recommendation of the Climate Smart Committee that the Board of Trustees strongly consider this opportunity and perhaps seek the means by which we would hire Empower to undertake the energy audit process as detailed in the proposal that I think the board has seen. I'd also add here as a footnote that some informal communication between myself is Asquith and Mr. Morrissey may indicate that we have some existing funds through existing grants that have not been spent, that may qualify for allocation to this particular endeavor in full or at least in part. I don't have more detail on that. That's that's a possibility, it seems. With that, I again want to thank the board for its time. And I would attempt to field any questions that's on the menu.
Thank you for that thorough report. And thank you for all this work you and Nicole have been doing on this. The and it seems to me to be a no-brainer to go ahead with it. The painful reality, of course, is that we will find out some issues that exist in our buildings that are likely expensive to fix. But you know, make a better world without figuring out what you need to do and having a long-term plan to make it happen. Do you? I notice the in their fee proposal, the 9950 provides the building area management and measurement survey and the energy and carbon review. And then thereafter, annual energy benchmarking is $500 per building per year. So what would that be? That would essentially say, we're going to come back and see if changes you have made have achieved results. Is that what that means, annual energy benchmarking?
I'm not exactly sure. I think that may be some type of of maintenance contract where they may continue to analyze. I should mention, by the way, as part of soliciting these proposals, we did offer to a few of these companies, the two in question that we did receive proposals from. We offered a top sort of summary look at our electric expenses, utility expenses for these properties. And so they were able to see in some detail what we've been paying for in terms of the bills for heating and cooling. I think what that may involve is if we were to to utilize it, an extended period by which they would continue to monitor the costs on a month-by-month basis, continue to offer sort of short-term recommendations, or perhaps continue to revise their bigger picture recommendation. In terms of our sort of top-line needs for the Climate Action Plan that this is a part of, for the climate, for the committee's needs here, a longer-term service contract is not is not part of that requirement.
Right. And once we sort of get this first part done, then we can understand what we're looking at and what role the outside consultants might have going forward.
Yeah. I should add, this proposal that we got, that was significantly more money. I mentioned earlier that this is a company that is clearly very familiar with the state agencies and bureaucracy detail of these programs that we're operating in. If we were at some point in the future hypothetically to undertake a much larger sort of village-wide
All aspects of our energy use.
Yeah, I mean, it might serve us well to consider investing more in a proposal from a company that is deeply familiar with with every detail of these programs that we're involved with. For our purposes now, this particular energy audit, I think, I think we have a less expensive proposal that meets all of our needs.
Well, and by by their accounting, their proposal, they've completed over 1,000 energy studies. And as a partner to many incentive and rebate programs, so clearly they've been around the block.
For sure.
All right, it sounds good to me. Any questions, anybody else, Paul or David or Jamie?
For me, I think it's a great program. I participated in getting an electric snow blower. It was great. I just purchased an electric regular blow. It's been awesome. And I think, you know, I got one of those incentives back, which was great. I think that really helps a lot of people. You know, there's the idea that it costs so much and, you know, it's isn't going to work, but it does work. And the fact that if we, the village, can help any of our residents be able to make that change, I think it's huge. So I think with this, it could really be a big game changer in that it really opens up how much we can really get in grants. And I think we're going in a good direction. So thank you for all your time and work that you've put into this.
Thank you.
Agreed. I second that. I think the work you're doing is great. I definitely think that the village is, you know, so lucky to have someone, obviously, like you. And obviously Nicole has been working on it as well. So thank you.
Thanks so much. Looking forward to seeing the results.
Right. And are you optimistic, Eric, that this $10,000 expense can be reasonably funded in the current budget year?
Yeah, we can move money from contingency. I believe we have, was saying about $2,000.
And then we are also working on getting a $100,000 grant as well, which is in the works.
Be allocated to this as well.
Sorry, that would be more than we need for this. You go.
I can come up with some other proposals. Spend the other 90 if you need. I'll be back next month.
Sure. What we'll likely do is create a capital account.
Yes.
Because this will likely lead to capital work.
Yes.
Funded probably in the short term with fund balance and/or contingency and then backfill with whatever grant money we have.
All right. Sounds great. So I think you've got all four of us who are present tonight all in favor. It's obvious that Nicole, who's not here, would be among us in saying, go, go, go. So thank you, Seth.
Thank you all. Appreciate your time.
All right. Next on our agenda is a conversation with the Rec Department. Too many windows open. All right, update from the Village Department of Recreation regarding summer programming and planning for the fall. Includes in the backup material is information about our summer camp enrollment and income and what pool enrollment income comparison this year to last. So you there, Mike?
Yes, I am.
Welcome, Mike Newman, our superintendent of Parks and Recreation. So a good news on both the camp and the pool front.
Yeah, I mean, I'll start with the pool. You know, compared to last year, if you just look at that membership report, we're pretty, you know, and this is, this is 2023 is all of last year. The 2024 is obviously as of seven, two. So we're right on track as far as membership compared to last year. You know, and we still have people coming in, purchasing memberships. This year, we've actually sold more of those one-time 10-pack day passes. We've we've sold way more than last year, probably double what we did last year. And people are still coming in and asking about those. So that's been strong and and overall, again, solid pool numbers. I I were right on pace with what we did last year. And obviously, we had a slight increase to our our fees. So obviously, our revenue is is up a tick.
And pool's been going well. We had that brief hiccup with our electrical problem in the kiddie pool, but that was quickly resolved.
Yeah, well, yes, we dealt with that. We're currently dealing with another issue with the kiddie pool, hoping to have it resolved by tomorrow. It appears we're we're just having some chemical issues and it's a number of a number of issues, but it seems to be stemming from, we might be losing some water. We're trying to figure that out. But our chemicals in the kiddie pool have been really out of whack. So we're hoping to reopen the kiddie pool tomorrow and figure out the issue. But we are working on it.
Does the extreme heat make that harder to maintain the chemical at the proper balance?
Yeah, I mean, he definitely, definitely burns off chlorine. You know, again, it seems like we might be losing water. We're trying to isolate that as best we can without doing extensive, you know, digging up of the pool deck to determine that. So we believe we have a workaround tomorrow and we'll just have to really keep an eye on our chemicals in the kiddie pool and adjust them when when needed manually.
As you know, but for the benefit of everyone who's watching, we're, we rebid the pool project with an ad option for the flood mitigation piece and are expecting those new numbers back in a week and a half. So we will know more about that and the possible affordability or lack thereof of the of the rebuilding of the pools, but stay tuned on that front. How about, has attendance been spiking because of the hot weather?
Yeah, we've been very, very busy at that pool for sure. I won't be surprised this year if our our guest fees are significantly up because it's been packed. You know, from from almost day one, we've been, we've been busy.
All right, so that's good news.
And Mike, with the guest passes, I know that we have an unlimited amount, right? You could bring guests. And we had any issue of just being overpacked or anything like that? Like, is that a concern at all? I know that, for example, Mount Pleasant limits family passes to three guests only, which I think what we're doing is much better, but just to get numbers, has that been an issue at all?
I mean, on the on certain days, I'm sure you could talk to different people and say, hey, it's overly busy. You know, it's something we'll continue to keep an eye on. But it's also one of those things to start having restrictions. Yeah, obviously, the safety of the pool is number one. And then, you know, after that, you don't want to add, you know, restrictions that start deterring people from coming to our pool. You know, the last couple of years, our numbers have increased. We want to try to continue to maintain that. So, you know, it's an ongoing conversation with directors on, you know, how they feel. You know, just looking at the, you know, cameras on the hot days, the pool deck looks packed, but if you look at the pool, there's there's less people in the pool. So, you know, there's a number of things to consider as far as number of people through the door. And it's an ongoing conversation.
Okay, I also wanted to commend you on, I heard the music for Fourth of July. There was a band there. Heard it was really good.
Yeah, they're a good band, local band, local resident. This is the second year they came out to us. So that's been a nice addition to our little Fourth of July at the pool.
Yeah, I got a lot of compliments from people recently. It was a band that were really good and it was really good. So I'm meaning to ask it. Good stuff.
Thank you.
That's for sure. All right.
Yep. So summer camp, you know, same kind of story. We've got strong numbers at summer camp. You know, basically, pretty similar numbers to 2023. Actually, slightly ahead, if you look at senior camp, we're at 252 total. As I talked, I think it was sometime in the winter about kind of a soft cap of 250. You know, we're right there. And, you know, as I said back then, you know, that soft cap is to consider, you know, mainly, you know, busing and, you know, any more than, you know, 250, we start pushing the limits, needing another bus. So, you know, we're right at our our soft cap number. Camp numbers strong in all camps. Our team travel sold out again, which was great. And then junior camp, again, strong numbers there as well.
Did you have? Sorry, David, go ahead.
Sorry. How many scholarship students do you have this year in summer camp?
I'm sorry, I don't have that in front of me, but I want to say it was north of 20, between 20 and 30.
How many were there last year?
I want to say it was closer to 15.
Great, thank you.
I can get you that exact number for for sure, but I don't have that in front of me.
And just for me, curious, do we have to turn away anyone because of our soft cap? Or that was just sort of like we were hovering on?
No, we did not turn anyone away. The only people that may have got turned away is, you know, we do have deadlines for like session one that we close. I forget the deadline, like session two, I believe, is Monday is the deadline for anyone that wants to add session two to camp. So, you know, after those deadlines, we would turn people away. They wouldn't be able to register online any longer, but we did not turn anyone away because of our soft cap. And that's why I said soft cap, like, you know, talking with Mindy, talking, making sure we, you know, have capacity of the bus. You know, we have 250 registered, but we're probably averaging, which is not out of the realm of, you know, is is normal. We're averaging probably 225 a day.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So some kids away, some kids sick.
Yeah, sick away, too hot, you know, yeah, a number of things, but that's it's not out of the norm for any camp.
And has the hot weather had a significant impact on what you can do and how everybody?
You know, like today, you know, out of kind of a little bit of abundance of caution, we moved senior camp out of Parkway Field and moved them to BRS for the day because of the heat. The heat index was creeping towards 100. So, you know, just keeping an eye on that, trying to be cautious of that and still have a fun-filled day at camp. You know, tomorrow, we're keeping an eye on that as well. But so far, hasn't been a major impact.
And the staff has worked out well. You were able to get enough people and?
Yeah, I would say this year, you know, we had plenty of applications. I think that's a thanks to you guys, you know, meeting my request to increase the rate of pay. So we had plenty of staff, gives us the opportunity to, you know, pick what we think is the best candidates. So staffing's been good. We're full. I mean, there's always going to be some fluctuation within a summer, but we are, we are in a good shape.
So sounds like really good news. You're running everything full tilt and and very professionally, so.
Yeah, and I just, I gotta just give a shout out to Mindy Rogers. And you guys all know this, but, you know, we're not where we are without her. She, you know, especially with our staffing within our office, it's just me and her. She has taken on a lot this past year and we're in the position we are because of her.
I think we found out at Fireman's Parade this year that she's the most popular person in the village.
She, I know that viscerally, she has just been such a not only a very talented person, but such a loyal and willing character. Whatever's needed, Mindy is the sort that lines up to help do it.
Yes, for sure.
So we are fortunate to have her and I think many, many Pleasantville families are well aware of that. So so while we have you, what? Is there an update on the on the forward-looking status of Panther Club?
Yeah, so just as our department as a whole, we have hired a rec leader. She starts August 5th, I believe, is the first Monday in August, which we're very excited about. Young girl from graduated from the University of Cortland. High recommendations from superintendents in the area who know her and have worked, had she's worked for. So very excited to have her on in the rec office. And as far as the Panther Club position, we have gotten all the necessary okays from the county. Currently just working on our internal and external posting, hoping to have that out. You know, realistically, with the music festival going on, probably out by next week so that we'll advertise for a director of Panther Club position and start interviewing as soon as I start getting applications in.
So this endless chase through? So this endless chase through civil service has resulted in a identifying a job title and category?
It got us the job title I I that I think is going to help us recruit someone specifically for a school-aged childcare program. Uh, so it it everything I kind of laid out is starting to fall into place, so hopefully the last pieces fall into place nicely.
Well, you you deserve that. It's been a bit of a run for the last year. Uh, sure. It's really. All right, so um, all good news on that front. Uh, getting positive feedback about the new playground up in Nantahagan?
Yeah, yeah, a lot of lot of positive feedback. I mean, when we first opened it, you, you know, you could see on the cameras, it was it was packed. I mean, I know that's the novelty of a new playground, but it it's still been busy. Um, you know, at least negative hasn't come to my door yet. Um, so it's all been positive. And I know uh the Playground Committee, I know a couple of them reached out to me. They're eager to start looking at our next playground projects. Um, I actually reached out to our rep for a design update for Nantahagan, I'm sorry, for Soldiers and Roselle, so that we can start discussing and finalizing designs for those, so we can start planning those out.
Well, it uh it was such a fun day that the ribbon cutting day, when there's that whole army of kids chanting screaming like banshees when the ribbon was cut to jump on the equipment. So and it just uh reminds one that the world has changed in the recent decade uh in terms of the uh kind of playgrounds that are being designed today and the level of interest and the variety of activities. Uh, it it isn't the same playground we all grew up with, and that's been a great, great, great thing. So.
And hopefully the next ones will be just as uh fun and creative. That's the plan.
All right. Uh, you go ahead.
I was just gonna bring up Panther Club. Um, Mike, I know for budgeting purposes, we need to figure out uh the scholarship program and what level of funding we're looking at.
Yeah, I mean, I know last year we put out basically a feeler if anyone was interested. Uh, we 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 did get, I think, one or two uh interested, but didn't qualify for the uh the same as the camp program, these free reduced school SNAP program. They didn't have that qualification, so they didn't meet the criteria for us. Um, i- if this is something the village wants us to do, um, you know, I can put it out there. As I mentioned to Eric, you know, Panther Club registration is uh this coming Monday. Um, so if we're gonna do a scholarship program, my suggestion is, uh, first of all, anyone that's interested, they can apply, but they're gonna have to register for the first month. Um, cause I don't have a way to like hold spots and and try to figure that out and who's getting a scholarship. They they would have to register for September, pay for September. And then if we are doing something, we can figure out how that gets applied monthly, yearly, however we end up doing that.
So I I my own view is that it it's unlikely that we could do a hundred percent scholarship, in other words, make it free. Uh, that would, I mean, what's the monthly cost?
Well, so the monthly cost varies depend on depending on what people sign up for, but.
In the hypothetical that a family needed a five-day program.
Yeah, five-day program is uh five thirty a month.
And it's essentially a nine-month program, so give or take, you know, very round figures, it's five thousand-ish for a family that have a five-day program for the entire school year.
Correct.
So, um, uh, it would be worth looking at the question of what that might look like if we provided a specific member partial scholarships. Obviously, the cost of full scholarships is dramatically higher than that for daycare. So you have any thoughts? Anybody else? David, you?
Yeah, um, first of all, I think that there may be a little bit quicker awareness of this this year now that the the scholarship for the summer camp has gained in popularity. I think that we should um be advertising this in Spanish for sure, and it should go in backpacks. Um, and I also.
I'm not, I'm not certain that the school will do that, but we can ask.
Well, yeah, it's for an, obviously for an after-school program. Um, and uh I guess the the thing that would be helpful is if anybody who has connections to that community could sort of find out what the real underlying need is. Um, I guess the issue, the only question I have, you know, let's say that we're gonna spend fifteen thousand dollars or something like that, and you could choose between sending three students five days a week for the year or, you know, giving a partial scholarship to like ten students. And the question is, you know, are we helping the people who need help the most? You know, where where is it gonna do the most good in the community? And I don't have a sense for that um, right now. I'm a little bit worried about people having to pay a month upfront um, as well.
I I'd also add that I wonder if the people that were eligible for the scholarship with the camp would be notified um, for the Panther Club.
Yeah, so the issue we we confront is if, you know, in fact, we have twenty or thirty kids currently in the scholarship program uh that look heavily funded by contributions from a bunch of organizations, if we had that level of engagement for Panther Club, two issues arise. One is it's way more money to provide scholarships. And then the other is the question of of the fact that folks have to enroll and some slots fill up, right?
I think it fills up very quickly, right, Mike, right?
Yeah, I mean, la- the last two years, I would say, especially last year, it it filled up uh some days closed within that first day of registration, probably within the first hour or so.
It's like buying Taylor tickets to get Panther.
You you took the words out of my mouth.
I think it would be great to hold back at least a couple of slots for this program. And, you know, if if it's a matter of somebody having to wait a couple of weeks to find out that they're let in from the waitlist, but in the meantime, we might be able to accommodate somebody. You know, I I think that would be very helpful, because we need to get this off the ground. You know, we, it's a good idea. Um, but operationally, we we don't have it nailed yet, right?
Nor have we got it funded. So that's part of our our set of questions.
That's my question, is the funding and sustainability. I mean, I don't, I don't know if we're always gonna have the same kind of money that came in for summer camp scholarships this past year.
Well, you know, that's an issue for sure. My perspective is this is, these are some of the better investments we can make in our community, because the number one thing that we know that concerns our residents is cost of living in Pleasantville and the lack of low-cost housing. Um, this helps people work, both the summer camp and after-school program.
Be trouble. It feels trouble.
All right, so we'll continue that uh conversation, but i- is it reasonable to think of holding back two slots? Is that what you proposed, David? Two five-day slots?
Yes.
What do you think of that? Everybody else? I think that's a good start.
So, so just just so you guys, I I can't necessarily hold five days. So in the system, I would have, so basically, the registration closes out per day when we hit one fifty. So basically, I would have to change each day. If you want me to hold two spots, I'm gonna need to make it two forty-eight. Um, cause it doesn't, you're not signing up for five days, you're signing up for each individual day that gets you the final days.
And choose, they can choose one, two, three, four, or five days.
Correct.
And do we have many people that choose just one day?
We do. We do.
And is it is it? Are are the slots that remain often Friday?
Yep. I don't think we've been full on Friday since we started the program.
So that's interesting. Parents, you know, especially those on a like schedule.
Uh, yeah, I mean, I I mean, and truthfully, Panther Club, eh eh eh, great program, but I think there are people that are are definitely using it for daycare and some of them are using it for, you know, playdates with, you know, that's, you know, their decision, but there's a little bit of all of that in that program.
Yeah, and I mean, that's come up in the past. I I I just don't think that it's our role to be vetting why someone seeks this service.
Yeah, no, that's not, that's not why I'm saying, I'm just putting it out there.
Suggested by some, but anybody else see that differently?
Um, I would be curious if I can go back to the people that received scholarships. I know it was a different funding and we got a large sum of money, but the tw- you said twenty received uh scholarships for the camp, is that right?
I I'd have to get the number.
Oh, yeah, but rough roughly, was it?
I believe it was over twenty.
Was it mostly, which camp group was it? Because?
It was a lot of, it was a lot of teen travel this year.
Okay, yeah, that's what I was gonna say, because Panther Club wouldn't apply to the teen. Like, I'm just thinking about the people that we could reach out to, that maybe we could hold these spots, these quote-unquote spots for. They wouldn't even apply to Panther Club because they would be older, right?
Correct.
Yeah, I'm just curious, being that we've helped this particular summer, but.
Yeah, that's interesting.
It's also a little too close. It's a little too close for signup at this point, I think, unless it's holding. Have we held spots before?
No.
We haven't done it, but if you could hold, I mean, e- essentially, you wouldn't have to worry about holding Fridays, right? So you're really holding like eight slots or whatever. You're you're like Monday through Thursday.
Right, but here's the thing, am I holding them for scholarship people or am I holding them for the order of the waitlist that's inevitably gonna be started?
You're holding scholarship people, and if we don't get the scholarship people, then we'll release them to your waitlist. I think that's a way that, you know, hopefully next year, we'll we'll get on this earlier, so we'll have it.
I would just be a little worried that we're holding spots and people on the waitlist are like, well, I'm first on the waitlist. Why is someone jumping?
And the answer is because those people can't work without this. It's not, it's not a luxury good to them. They're low-income residents of our village, and we're trying to help them. And I'm happy to.
I I mean, ju- just to add to that, I I I agree, David, but there are plenty of parents who would say the same thing, even though they are higher income.
That's true.
They struggle to live here, have both parents working, pay the mortgage, pay the property taxes, pay the prospects for daily life, and um would say the same thing, that their lives are very substantially upended.
They will probably be more supportive when they think about somebody earning probably a third of what they do, trying to do the same exact thing.
That's true, but I feel like we need to get our like ducks in a row, like for this kind of thing. Like, I, it's gonna be, if we present it, like ha- half of the idea and we're presenting it to people, I feel like if we get the word out, it's gonna be better suited for people, then they'll be able to get their work schedules in order to be able to use the days they need.
But it's just, this is the second year, okay? So my perspective is, let's get a couple of kids into this program. I don't think if we put out through our networks that this is available now. Now those few, I was already approached by the people, you know, who are putting these scholarships together for the summer camp about this. And I think if everybody at least knows.
You mean the funders?
Yes.
Uh, with the thought that they might fundraise for this as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
So they're, they're clearly not gonna necessarily have their act together in the next five days either. But I think that if we can at least save a a spot or two, once you get a couple of kids in there, then that word will spread in that community. And the same thing we've been able to do in terms of demand generation anyway, with the summer camp will happen with this program too. And I I just, I think this is really important. It's not a luxury good. This is like, we need to keep people who work in service, who work in construction, who work in hourly jobs, living in productive in the village. And if their kids are not taken care of, they can't do that.
So it's about ten thousand dollars what we're talking about, right? That's the concept for the month program for five days a week. That's what we're thinking.
Right.
My 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 initial inclination would be not to offer a hundred percent scholarships.
Well, I'd I'd say let's reserve that amount and let's reserve two spaces and let's find out what the actual need is. Um, and then we can make a decision about that. I'm just concerned, like, if you target something that ends up hitting somebody, a family makes a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year or whatever. They may have a legitimate need, but it's a different need than a family who's making below the um, you know, below the poverty level. And the poverty-level family may not be able to pay dollar one. The people, I mean, think about it, the people who are getting the the um, free school lunches, they're doing it because they can't pay five dollars a day for a school lunch.
All right, so Mike, um, given the logistics of how you do this, is it possible to, in essence, take out of this system two Monday to Thursday slots while we continue to work this out?
Yeah, I'll have to, yeah.
Does that make sense? Paul, what do you think?
Yeah, I think it's the start. Yeah, I think it definitely, it would help if you could do it, Mike. I know that obviously you gotta figure out your numbers over there, but.
Yeah, and I mean, the the as as you all know, every year uh, there has been very, very substantial concern on many, many families of that we are not in a position to expand this program to meet whatever the demand might be. And for all the reasons we've talked about in past years, ours, by licensing, what the school space is available after school, and many other things that go on in the school, our own staffing, all of those things make it really impossible for us to say we will expand this program to however many kids we want to be in it. We just can't do that. So when we're doling out what in some years is a scarce commodity, it's a a very fraught discussion with parents who depend on it for whatever reason, at whatever level of income they may be. So just have to be sensitive to all of that.
So I I can work on that. So you guys want me to take out two spots Monday through Thursday uh, for the potential of a scholarship?
Yeah, meanwhile, we'll we'll work on the question of what that scholarship might look like. How much would it cost? Would it be a hundred percent? Would it be some partial scholarship? If partial, what percentage? Um, and and, you know, obviously, we need some sort of a policy about if we have hundred fifty spaces, is there a, is there a policy that says X number of that 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 kids who arrive with a family that demonstrates need jump the waitlist over families that don't, right? That's that's the issue.
Right.
How many kids are usually in Panther Club again, Mike?
One fifty. That's our, that's our, that's our max. We're we're pretty much one fifty Monday through Thursday and probably closer to one thirty on Fridays.
Right, and maybe uh just a thought here, guys, I I know that maybe it's not just two families, maybe there's several people that can also use one, one of those days each. Do you know what I mean? Like, you can also kind of expand that if that's possible, but I would think that we'd have to put out more feelers on this. Um, but maybe see what the capacity is if we can hold two spots. I think it's a great cause. I'm not saying anything of that. I just know what that signup is like for Panther Club and how the desperation between the people that rely on it so much already. Uh, not saying that that takes away from the neediness of anyone else, just that I know they're there at the, and the second that it turns a certain it's like the clicking, you've got to get it. Your job is reliant, so.
Right, right, right.
And also remember that the way that we have signup could also disadvantage these exact families too. Cause this depends on a reliable internet connection. It depends. You know, these are, these are in public libraries. This is all the same access issues that we're aware of, so.
That's true. I think you're, I think most people that look for aftercare, you know, regardless, or some sort of care for your children, regardless of your income, I think have to think ahead a little bit. They have to think, like, the the people that are signing up for Panther Club, this is three months in advance or two months in advance, so they're meaning like anyone's kind of thinking, what am I gonna do with the kids? So so that is, that is a logistical question that anyone is asking, even if they don't have access to the internet or the fast internet. or the fast internet, I just mean, it might be something that I don't wanna take away from the people that need it so badly already as well.
No, what I'm saying is that, um we are probably systematically excluding part of our population from even being able to take part in this, because they can't be clicking on the morning that it's available, even if they know it's available, even if they could use it.
Right, yeah, I got it, yeah. I understand.
Alright, so we have some more work to do, but for the moment, s- sounds like, Mike, if you can lock, lock out Monday to Thursday for two slots, and again, that might be potentially two kids going Monday to Thursday, or as Amy suggested, might be more than two kids dividing up those days in different ways, and that obviously turns into a a different conversation, uh, depending on how that played out, so. But it would also be interesting, and maybe you can send it to the board members, if, if, if you, if it's an easy matter to determine how the existing scholarships in the camp played out based on age. And that would help us identify the percentage of those kids who are potential Panther Club participants, sound, you know, obviously some of these are in fifth or higher grade, it's not an issue to the inmates, so.
Yeah, I can definitely put that together, uh, it may not be in the next day or two, cause I'm.
That's fine.
But yeah, I can put that together.
Alright. Anything else on the Marks and Rec front?
No, besides Panther Club, you know, me and Mindy will start working on our fall brochure and try to get it out uh mid, late August, uh, for our fall programming.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Alright, thanks a lot.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Sign you off.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Alright, seven fifty-six, we'll start our regular meeting at eight o'clock, you only have four minutes to wait. Is Francesca coming?
I, I would think so, yeah.
She had said she was.
Is there anything on, on the agenda? Cause I haven't seen.
About the issue of moving the elections?
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's not, not a specific agenda item, but we'll do that first in public comment.
So you have open.
Yeah, we've got other stuff going, going on, but since this is.
Okay.
If we're getting a, a bunch of people interested in this subject, we'll do that first in public comment. Okay, uh, sorry, I was just telling these guys, we'll, we'll uh start the meeting, couple of announcements to make, we'll start with public comment and.
Oh, we're gonna start with public comment?
Yeah, and that would be you.
I was told, maybe not right away.
We'll do it right away, not try to waste anybody's time.
We don't wanna waste anybody's time.
So, as I also reported, Francesca, uh, Nicole is away today, but both David and Amy are participating remotely for medical reasons, so there are four of us, four of us into.
I know, I, you, many times I watch you remotely. I gave one to Eric already. Well, I had to have coaching on how to make these.
That's the same one you had for Sleepy Hollow.
But we changed some of the words, yeah, I didn't have the one. I had nothing to do with Sleepy Hollow. But it is, and it's also a word from Hastings too. It's been making the rounds.
Alright, so one minute, we'll start at eight o'clock, start our regular meeting. Good evening, welcome to the Village Board Meeting for the Village of Pleasantville. Today is Monday, July eighth. Uh, present in the meeting room, Paul Alvarez and uh me. Um, participating remotely for medical reasons, David Vingamuri and Jamie Healy. Uh, Nicole Asquith is away tonight, uh, so there are four of us officially present. Uh, David and Jamie visible as you can see on the screen, so uh, our next uh regular meeting is two weeks from today, Monday, July twenty-two, work session at seven P M. A regular session at eight, at eight, and as always the case, uh both our work sessions and regular sessions are available live via the Zoom link that you can find at Pleasantville-n y dot gov. Uh, and within a matter of a few days, uh, the tape produced uh via uh Zoom is posted at P C T V seventy-six dot org, where you have an on-demand opportunity to watch uh this and previous uh meetings. So, uh, we just made one uh announcement upfront, uh, very timely. Uh, and then we'll go to public comment, there are a bunch of folks here with a matter they want to bring up. Uh, the timely report I wanted to make is that this Saturday, July thirteen, is the Eighteenth Annual Pleasantville Music Festival. Uh, we very much hope you will go to Pleasantville Music Festival dot com, read all about it, uh, sign up for tickets, uh, and um we are very much hoping that the weather cooperates with us, we're watching that carefully, but as of the moment, please come to the Eighteenth Annual Pleasantville Music Festival. Alright, with that, I invite public comment, folks, please come to the uh podium and give us your name and address for the record, even though many cases we already know, and let us know what's on your mind.
Thank you very much. My name is Francesca Hegitus McHale. I live at twenty-four Brentwood Drive here in the village, and I'm here to talk about moving uh village elections to November. And I want to, before I say anything, this is not about electing me, or, you know, this was not, I found that the March election situation um has some drawbacks to it, and I've done it twice, and I really would like to um ask you to consider moving village elections to November. Uh, first of all, we are um one of the few villages that don't have elections in November. Uh, they've all decided to shift, the latest one was um Sleepy Hollow. And um Hastings did this, and I have talked with them on how to go about doing this, they've given me very good pointers, and um they had a very nice election in um, in, in November, and a very balanced board, so this doesn't. No, I'm talking about Sleepy Hollow, Sleepy Hollow's most recent.
But they just did that in this past March, didn't they?
Yes, they, no, they, they got it, uh, yeah, they got a referendum passed.
This past, this March that just, yeah, a few months ago.
Yes.
So they haven't had a November.
No, they haven't had a November election, but the referendum passed.
Understood.
Um, by a nice majority, you know, nothing, it wasn't close.
Correct.
Everybody approved it, and it was balanced, and so, and they have, um, um they have candidates that are going to run for the openings in, on their board in November. So, the people that are, uh, from what I understand, you know, I didn't go into their political detail that much. But what I'd like to say is that, um the, the elections, first of all, there are five thousand two hundred, five thousand and twenty-one registered voters in the village of Pleasantville, and this year in March, only six hundred and forty-one people turned out to vote. And I, as you all know, I um made sure everyone knew there was an election. I did whatever I could to make sure that, that we knew there was an election, and I was very disappointed in the turnout itself. Because after the election, people said, oh, well, I didn't hear about this, or I didn't hear about that, and I didn't know, and, 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 you know, social media has a way of, of um pointing things out like that, and um I didn't hear anybody talking about the pool, and I so of course people talked about the pool, you should've, you know, we, we had a whole presentation on uh P C T V. So, you know, to increase voter participation, to have village elections when uh other elections are taking place, we can definitely point out village issues during that time. We are not limited to just having people come out and vote straight across the ticket. They want, they, we have more time to reach voters, to have more meet and greets, to have um more public forums for uh, if you're Latin, um, and um it, it gives you definitely an opportunity to get to know the candidates better. Um, our, our petitions were due February uh third, and the election, I believe, was March fifth. That gives us a little over four weeks to get out there and, and really talk to people. So what ends up happening is, you know, my son ran track with your son, so, you know, I know you, so let's, you know, that's what ends up happening, uh, and people vote for their friends, for the people that they've met in other circumstances. So, um, it, it also expands the opportunity to, to vote. There is no early voting for, um for village elections, that's it. If you don't show up March fifth, if you're out of town, or it snows, forget it. So, um, this gives you more opportunity to vote. It gives you the same for, for early voting opportunity that uh general elections have. Saves money for the county, um, you know, I do know people who are uh election inspectors, and they sit there all day long in each one of the voting locations, and we had the Lutheran Church, we had the rec center, and uh we had Daniel P Hayes, and they sit there all day long, and, you know, eight or nine people wander in, and then nothing. And then another two or three people come in, where this, you know, they're, we pay good money. And so this would be very, very um advantageous for the county to save the money and just have one period where they have election inspectors. Um, you know, it, I've always heard that village elections are very slow, but I didn't know how slow they were after, until I ran it.
Slow in terms of voter turnout?
Turnout, yes, and that these people sit there from six, five A M to almost ten P M. And they're paid handsomely for it, and they have the same amount of election inspectors as they do for general elections. Another thing that's um a disadvantage is that um they can't close the school for village elections, so um, parking becomes a problem, uh, handicap parking in particular. Um, you know, especially if you're voting, um, i- it's not as accessible as when you can close the high school and have six or seven districts in the same building. Uh, voter fatigue is another problem. When, this year, we voted in village elections, we voted in the primary, and then um, then we're gonna vote again in November, and, and we have the school board elections, that's four times. If we want people to vote, we have to have them vote at the same time. I have no idea what the school board would like to do. Okay, I don't know whether they would prefer this or not, but I do know that um the uh village elections would be better served if they were on a general election day. Um, it's more time to meet us, get to know us, uh, we could have a public forum in, in various places, we could have a debate. You know, people could really um hone in on the issues and ask questions, a League of Women of Voters could get involved. A lot of things could happen, but in four weeks, there's no time to get that done. Okay, so, you know, I had uh two or three meet and greets in, in houses, and then I had one at Soul, and the other one at um, the Black Cow, and maybe five or six people were at each one, so that's you know, not what I'd like to see. I'd like people to be able to talk to the candidates and really ask the questions on where they, what they feel about the issues, and um you know, the village budget is, is presented just a few weeks after you're sworn in. So, that is one of, by moving the elections to November, the mayor and the trustees will have more time and experience to build a budget that's right for Pleasantville. Okay, that's what's really important here. And again, aligned with our neighbors, we have many, many other, most other villages now are moving to November. And it's a nonpartisan issue, this is not, you know, I know how important it is to maintain village elections nonpartisan. Um, you know, it is, um, it, it makes more sense, okay, it makes more sense. Democrats, Republicans, and independents can vote on the same day, nevermind, and um you know, and I also do agree that it's important to maintain a nonpartisan uh board. So I think that it would be very, very um uh beneficial towards the village to align ourselves with everyone in Westchester County and move to November. And with that, I thank you for your time, and I gave this to you and everybody else.
Right, so I have a few thoughts about that, but why don't I just wait until others have spoken, if anyone else wishes to?
Yeah, a couple of people said they want to.
Everybody has a chance and.
Well, really, I really don't have anything else to add on. My name is Ralph Ferriola, I live in Washington. I've been in this uh village for thirty-two years. And you guys are doing a great job. This is not personal, this is not about getting people um, you know, get, I'm involved in the political party, but this is not, we're not looking for the political party to put up a candidate. I think the nonpartisan works in the village, and it should stay that way. But it does save us money, and more people could be involved when you have a general election like in November, because people are tuned in, as you see now, what's going on, and everybody is anxious and ready for November. And I think it brings the village in, it shows a little bit more of concern, and people might have some issues. But it's not gonna be like the Democrat Party is gonna put up a candidate, that's not gonna happen. Far as I'm concerned, if I'm still involved in the Democrat Party, or the Republican Party, put up a candidate. I think the nonpartisan is beautiful. Like I said, I've been here thirty-two years, and I've been in business fifty years. You guys are doing a great job. I'm proud to be in Pleasantville. My business is doing much better because of you people. How you brought people in, how you generated, and how you protect the, the business community. I mean, we have a little issues with traffic, but that's gonna work its way out. I mean, but I think you guys are great, it's not about removing or looking to take somebody out, it's just about course and having the village get involved as part of a general election, instead of being on the outskirts and waiting for March to come. So I, 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 I would like to support, you know, I test this out there, and you know, we could go a petition route, which I really don't like to do, you know, we get four hundred petitions, people sign, we could get on the ballot. But I think the right way to go is to respect it and go through the process, that, you know, you guys give us, you're okay, it won't happen until November election, this will be on the ballot. Far as I'm hearing, it'll be on the ballot in November. So if it does pass in November, it's for next November. It won't happen this November. I mean, I don't think you could put this on in March, and people are gonna come out just for this. So if this passed, that you agree that we go, we vote in November, we should, it will be on November ballot, when people come out to vote, and that lets the, the public.
So we should dig into that a bit more?
Yeah.
Uh, Francesca, do you have more on that?
You have more on that?
Yeah.
Okay, so, I'm, just like the guy, guys, we'll take this person, you understand, it's just about, we'll save, I think we'll take, save a lot of tax money. As, as you mentioned, you know, the poll watchers are getting three hundred dollars a day for the holidays, so waste your money. Be nice if it was done in November, thank you.
That's right. You wanna touch on the schedule issue, or maybe let's hear from other people.
Hi, my name is Bill McHale. I've been here for thirty-plus years in Pleasantville. I'm at, uh, I'm a homeowner at twenty-four Brentwood. And I currently reside at Foremanville. I arrived late, so pardon me asking this, but is it known what the voter participation percentage was in the last village election?
Twelve percent.
Yeah, by Francesca's recording this.
Twelve percent.
The lines, six hundred and some people voted out of the universe, and potentially five thousand.
Okay, and is it known what the uh voter participation was in Pleasantville in the presidential elections in the past?
So I don't know that we have easy access to the specific village numbers, because that involves congressional districts. But certainly the general sense of it uh is, is available, and I imagine it's in the forties. Dare to say, Francesca, is that your?
It is, it is.
Alright, well, it seems to me that we, we, we currently have a way of doing politics in the village of Pleasantville that's nonpartisan. And I like, you know, we, we, we have intelligent, we're not dealing with national issues here. We're dealing with local issues, and we need intelligent people, people of goodwill to make intelligent decisions, and there's nothing broken here that needs to be fixed. My concern is the twelve percent participation in the local election. And, you know, to me, people who live here want, you know, that they're, they're active citizens, it seems to me, and that percentage is low. As I see it, that twelve percent of the pop, of the eligible voters are actually participating. And I think. And I think if we were to do this in November, that percentage would increase su- dramatically and more people in the community would have input into they'd feel the part, I mean, I think my sense is people, the local election happens and people are not aware. They're not tuned in, you know, they're they're here, the government's working, there's no real major problems. Uh so they don't participate. I think we can get a higher voter participation in local election if you were to move to November. And that's that's my answer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening.
Hey.
My name's Nancy King. I live in Pleasantville Gardens, two ninety-three Mammoth Road. And I think a lot of the points that Francesca made are good points. And what hit home for me especially is to ease voter fatigue because it seems like I'm going to the polls every two months. And when I'm at work and I ask my coworkers, oh, are you gonna vote? They're like, no, they didn't know there was an election. So um I think if we could consolidate and have fewer elections, I think we would get better turnout, more people would have a voice. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Uh my name is Judy Gordon. Uh I've lived in Pleasantville for over twenty years. Um I live in Foxwood and though Foxwood is not exclusively for older adults, I would say that the majority of people who live there are older adults. And in terms of timing, elections in November would be convenient. Elections in March, many people in my age group go off to Florida and by March, they're already not here. Um so both in terms of who's on site and who could vote in mo- votes in March, plus the weather being a consideration, I feel for the older population, November election would work much better.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, you have questions?
So I just, you had some comment about the schedule.
Yes, um apparently, from what I understand, um you would serve, in other words, your term normally is up at the end of February, uh.
Right, well, actually.
Right, okay, so but you know, they
Elections in March. The transition occurs.
Then they swear in the new.
First week of the.
Um so actually, that group that is up for election would serve all the way till December first.
Right, so if this were to be changed.
Yes.
Anyone who was up in March would be extended by seven months.
Yes, I looked into that.
But the you had commented in your email about the deadline of August five.
Yeah, I, in other words, this ha- if we're going to have a um if we're going to put a referendum on the ballot in November. Okay, we have to know whether you approve of this or not in your next meeting so that if you say no, we have, well, we already started getting signatures anyway, just in case you say no. But I don't see why you would. But um we we would have to get a certain amount of signatures to um Eric Morsey uh by, well, I'd like to get him in there before before August fifth, but that's the deadline. And then he can go over the signatures and make sure that they're all right and people really do live in this village and they do exist and things like that. And then they go to the Board of Elections and it's put on the November ballot for all the voters to decide in November. So um but you know, I would hope that we don't have to do that, but I do, I'm ready to go. I mean, that's not a problem, you know, me. I'm always ready to go. But um you know, we we can gather the four hundred signatures needed to get on a referendum on the ballot. If you decide this is a great idea and you decide you vote on it at your next meeting or whenever you decide to vote on it, then we don't need to get it on the ballot. You just you know, just to inform the world.
Oh, it has to be on the ballot. I I do not believe that.
Yeah, that's what it would say, yes, but it doesn't need, we don't need to gather signatures to petition to get it on.
Understood.
Yeah.
So so did others have more to say or?
No.
Yeah. Well, just touch on a on a few items. The the first is to say um I I somewhat doubt that it is possible to have this on the November ballot. Uh although I'm not certain of that.
I've been to the Board of Elections.
The logistics of making that happen are pretty complicated. And and what that would mean, for example, is that uh the ballots that people receive, there would have to be a specific ballot unique to voters in the village of Pleasantville.
Yep.
Different from all the other ballots. Um so let me also say uh and I have lots of things to say about all that's been said, some of which I fully agree with and some of which I I I don't agree with. Uh but I'm not sure what the urgency is in a circumstance here where it's a discussion that's worth having in the community. Um and uh I I totally endorse the efforts to have that. Um I think some of the issues are not immediately apparent to the average person who looks at this and says, oh, sure, that'll be easier. Yes, yes, yes. Um and I I think it's short circuit the opportunity to have a broader conversation, but I don't know why we don't have time to have that broader conversation since there is no election in twenty twenty-five.
Well, that's why we wanted to.
No one is up for
Yeah.
Who, as you know.
Yeah.
Our
Your board.
Cycle is two people up for election one year, three people the next, and then in the third year, no election. Then we start the cycle again because one three-year terms.
Yeah.
Um so at the moment, uh Paul and Nicole would be up for election in the current system in March twenty twenty-six. And in hypothetical that this were to be changed between now and then, they'd be up for election in November twenty twenty-six.
Yes.
Uh a a year and a half from now. So I guess my question there is um why do you think we're in a rush to get this on this November ballot?
Well, I think when it's not an election year is the best time to do it because that truly shows that this is something the village wants.
It's not an election year next year either.
I know, but then it's there, it's done. You you know, we don't have to discuss this. I mean, look, let me tell you, one of the reasons I'm doing it personally right now is because I'm a teacher and I have summers off and I have the time to do this right now. But um you know, I can come to as many meetings as you want to have this discussion. Um but it is um, to me, it looks better when you're doing it when there is no election.
But there is no election next year either. So if you just hypothetically.
Right.
If this were to be a ballot referendum in November twenty twenty-five.
Uh huh.
There's no election that year. That would be uh 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 the only village matter up for consideration. Uh likewise, November twenty twenty-four. So I mean, as you well know, obviously, these referendums that have existed elsewhere, you put it up for referendum, say, should we move from March to November, they pass easily
Mm-hmm.
and they pass easily every
Mm-hmm.
Perfectly understandable. The average person looks at that and says, okay, I go, I go once instead of twice, great, easier, yes, bang, done. Um there are some reasons we might not want to do it. And I mean, as you know, I am deeply committed to our nonpartisan system. Um as as many others have already reported. Um I I can tell you, having talked over all these years to many mayors and supervisors, not supervisors, that doesn't affect count, uh many mayors of villages, both in Westchester and beyond. And in the vast majority of those circumstances, those conversations I've had, people have said um I wish we hadn't done it. And they've said that because the local issues have been essentially sucked into
National.
An election cycle. I mean, just for example, in in this year in November, people are going for presidential election, they're going for Congress, state elections, county elections. By the time you get through judges and DAs and that, you get to the bottom of of the ballot, should Pleasantville do X or Y, or hypothetically, should John or Mary be elected? Um it is very hard for any of those conversations to have occurred in a really substantive way in that kind of climate where so many things are flying around all at once. Um and where our community is full of campaign material for all these other levels of elections. So you commented in your recent election that uh uh you had moved heaven and earth to let people know uh when the election was and you uh at your campaign's expense sent door-to-door mailings and knocked down lots of doors. The county Board of Elections sends a yellow postcard to every registered voter. Um and obviously, P C T V uh had interviews with each of the candidates and the examiner had multiple art articles. Uh the village sent out emails indicating ec- election day is coming, da-da-da-da. All those things happen. So I I just, the the struggle I have, or struggle is not the right word. The question I have in thinking this out is um I I think in in the majority of circumstances I'm aware of, obviously turnout has increased simply because you got more people going to the polls for other reasons. Um lots of folks would say they're not going to the polls for the village vote reasons. They're going to the poll because they're going for all these other uh higher uh offices.
Mm-hmm.
All of which is is also fine if you uh are hopeful that that can draw people into the real issues. I will say, when you talked about the idea of of, you know, more time to talk about the issues, I can I I I find it hard to imagine, having been through this myself quite a few times, how you cut through the clutter of presidential election, Congress, congressional.
I don't think would be during presidential years. I think presidential years would not be the time to have a vis- village election.
Okay, but you're proposing just that.
Well, I'm I'm proposing a referendum that you turn your ballot over and you vote on the referendum.
Okay.
That's the way it is. Okay.
Again, you got all these things flying around. So let me also say um and and I I'm not asserting that this is what's going on here, but in a significant majority of the communities which have gone to November elections, it has been a partisan issue. It's not a nonpartisan issue um that in most of those circumstances, part of the underlying motive, and I've had these conversations in other communities um uh including, you know, democratic committees here in Westchester grappling with this question. And a piece of the argument, understandably, which goes on all the way up the ballot is, we need to get our people to the ballot, to to the box to vote the party line. So we have had the blessing of not running against Republicans and Democrats and you all assert that you agree with that.
Mm-hmm.
I wholeheartedly agree with it. I uh one of my fears, and you might over time be able to lay my fear of that, is that the November election system uh s- s- sort of starts that process to draw i- into the party alignment. And look, it's a free country, the parties can get involved. Nothing keeps them from getting involved other than, we've had this great tradition, I can tell you, I can't count the number of people in the many years I've been involved here who who are involved in other governments saying, oh, my God, I only wish we had what you have, an election that doesn't involve the party mechanisms. We, as as you know, everyone who sits at this table ran as an independent being with no need to be anointed by anybody, no need to be chosen by anybody in a caucus, no need to confront a primary, no need to spend a load of money to get here. Um and that's really been important.
Okay, so so but if you say that it gives it that people won't focus on the issues, they'll vote along party lines. I say that only six hundred and forty-one people coming out does not show that people are focusing on the issues.
It shows that six hundred and forty-one people are focusing on the issues.
Yes, but that's.
So if we have.
No, and then they
So here's the question.
Wait, wait, hold on. And then they keep complaining, those people who don't vote keep complaining and they make probably your lives miserable about a lot of other things too. So I think that the more people are given the opportunity to really examine the issues, and I would never suggest that we should have village elections during the presidential year.
But I mean, that is gonna happen.
That's a referendum.
But it's gonna happen.
Yeah, but it's not.
We don't get to choose that.
Joe over.
We've got this schedule unless we start changing a lot of things. That's gonna happen at some point, just the way the system works, right?
Right, but perhaps, you know, it it's going to happen, but if if we have a, if we get known for having a really broad um exposure of the issues, much more broad, I mean, I exposed as much as I could, but I'm one person and I was, if if we expose as many issues that need addressing as possible and really, really drive the message home, then I think that more than six hundred and forty-one people will show up to vote for village um candidates. I really, I was shocked, I was shocked. And um I think that we're such an educated um dynamic community and we have so much going on and it's a great place to live. I I can't imagine living anywhere else so long as I can get up my steps, you know, um I really I really think that that only six hundred and forty-one people coming out is a crisis. It really is. It's 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 not democracy. And I really, I think that we we can do better as far as elections go. As far as being a board go, you've you've done a great job.
So I I I totally agree, we we can do better and I do encourage more involvement and it's totally worthy conversation to talk about how to do it. And maybe there are a bunch of different ways in which we could do it, but I I will say, having been through quite a few elections, um the turnout varies and that varies depending on the candidates. And it varies depending on whether there is an issue.
Uh I went through that too. It doesn't vary that much.
Well, so with the previous year when uh uh Paul was running, you were
Yeah.
You're the top vote getter, weren't you, Mr. Allison?
But I ran.
Yeah.
Yeah, he was the top and then Nicole.
Nicole was. Yeah, whatever. Again, it will vary and that will vary.
It, yeah, but it's never been more than a thousand people. The new thousand, you see, that's people.
But here's my question. Um if you have two thousand people vote because they were going to vote for a president or whatever else is on the ballot, um how is it that we have successfully engaged them in who was running, what they thought, what the issues are? How do we do that? And I can tell you, I have yet to encounter anybody, not that I've talked to all of whom, I certainly haven't. I've yet to encounter in all the years I go to New York, I've been to mayors, whatever, I talk to folks at Westchester Municipal Official Association. I have yet to encounter a single elected official who said, switching to November uh highlighted the issues. It buried the issues. It increased voter turnout because they were there anyway. Yes, I get it.
But it's up to the, it's up to the candidates to highlight the issues.
Okay, but the the question is, you worked hard in your your uh in your election to highlight whatever you felt should have been highlighted.
Mm-hmm.
And is it your suggestion that lots of people received that message but were not willing to vote?
They were away, they were um, they just didn't feel, realize, a lot of people didn't uh, they just don't vote.
They're not focused.
They're not focused on March. To them, what, March?
Yeah, okay, so so so.
Can I just interject?
Sure. You just come here so that it gets reported. Right.
Point is well taken.
Yes.
That you might get buried in November, but you're buried in March because no one is focused. Uh everything is local, right? Because everyone say everything is local. So this is local. Politics is local.
Sure.
And the way it runs in the village, it's almost like a private local club. Well.
What do you mean by that?
Let me explain. I've been in politics since nineteen eighty-six. And it's all, and it's all about numbers.
Yes.
It's all about numbers. So when you, I I'm not, I don't wanna go into the political, how you run a party or how you run your your election, but it could be controlled. It could be controlled when it's so small like this.
What do you mean, controlled?
You could bring your own people in. It's simple as that.
Need to vote?
Because it's all about numbers, not about anything else.
Right.
Most people are not focused on issues. They're happy, the town is beautiful, the village is good. There's no issue. I know you, you know me, I give you a call. I know you, you know me. I give you a call. I do me a favor. This guy is running. If I have nineteen hundred people that I know in the village. That like me and I know them or I did him favors. I might get nineteen hundred votes and I could control an election. It's very dangerous village elections, I feel. I think you should be open to a general public. You're not gonna get buried in issues because. On a general election, everybody's focused and most people will be focused on the issues they're concerned on. If it's not the president, it might be the local issue, but it's all in the package. And to me, makes a lot of sense. Unless it becomes just a private club. And I think that's a dangerous outlook. I'm not saying that it's happening. I'm not accusing anyone, but it could look that way.
So I I will, I I understand your point and I I hear you. I would push back pretty hard on the idea that it's a private club.
Well, you know, I'm just, I'm just making.
Listen to.
Statement. I'm not saying it is.
I do not know a a s- a single board anywhere in Westchester. Uh, where the mayor can sit here and I can say. I knew of Paul Alvarez before he ran. Uh, but I didn't know him well. I knew him through the Chamber of Commerce. I had never met. David Benjamin Reed. I had never met Nicole Askwith. I had met Yemi when when my son was friends with her brother thirty five years ago. So we're talking about a board that sits here that is the opposite of a private club. So and I just, I don't want to leave that thought with the suggestion that folks would hear that snippet and say. What are these guys doing?
No, I'm not accusing anyone of doing that, but you might not know Paul Alvarez. But you might know nineteen hundred people that come out and vote for Paul because you recommended Paul.
Which I didn't.
And that's what you did, but that could happen in a village election.
And that's what happens in every election.
Well, a general election, they lose control of that.
That's what in every election, right? That's why both parties in a major election have phone banks calling everyone.
Yeah, but it's hard to, yes, I agree.
Okay.
And you pull the votes and I know you identify your voters and you go and you go to them. But it's hard to control. It's easy in the village to control. And I'm not accusing, please do not misunderstand.
I I disagree with you that it's easy to control. I can tell you.
I'm not accusing.
You cannot get elected.
But a general election, first of all, you're gonna save so much more money.
Well, first off, it's.
How much money did it cost you?
Costs us nothing. The county runs it. Not that that isn't tax dollars. It is.
Um, and I think the board of election would be in favor of general election. I think they would like that much better than village elections. All the work is done together. Everybody's on the same page. Everybody's doing the same thing. Except you gotta get the machines back out on on March, which is, you know, it's it's.
I saw.
It should be just, and I'm not only speaking from Pleasantville, it should be for every town and village. They should go generally. It's it's a democracy. Election day should be on election day. They're relevant. Just an opinion. Please do not take it personally.
I don't take it personally.
I just want to also point out that when um Nicole and David and Paul first ran, they were uncontested. So, you know, it was almost um I I. A year ago.
You mean in in their previous term?
Yes.
So they were running as incumbents?
No, the first time each one of them ran, they were uncontested.
Yes.
Okay, so it was, there was no reason. It it, that's it. I mean, most people didn't bother to come out and vote because they um, it was uncontested. Okay, so.
And and why would you, right?
Right, exactly. I mean, you know, they're gonna get in anyway. So when I decided last year the first time to run, you know, there was a little bit more of a hubbub, but not much. And this year, not much. So um, you see that it's focusing on the issues is not happening. Is not happening. All right, so so. I I think that it's important to, you know, we're not, anyone who runs for village is not gonna be on a party line. It's gonna be, it's gonna be a separate line. People will vote and.
We hope it.
Now, you have a commitment on you.
You have.
I appreciate that, but we don't have the rest of the world's commitment.
That it's a a major accomplishment because one of the things I found when I ran is I could talk to anyone. And some people like me and some people don't, but not because of what party I'm in. It's how where I stand on the issues. And that was such a relief to be able to just talk to anyone because as you know, I have run for election before. And um, and I could only only talk to people from my party because there was no point. Otherwise, there was no point discussing it with anybody else. So um, and you know, you notice I'm avoiding saying the party. Yeah, so I think it was a tremendous relief to run as in a nonpartisan way. And I I respect that and I would like to, I would fight for that anytime.
Well, should we end up with November elections? I will count on all of you to fight for that because I I can tell you in. Many communities, the level of partisanship has grown and even in a circumstance where. Folks ran not on a party line, the influence of the parties uh has grown. So you you end up in a circumstance where someone runs as, you know, I want a better world party. Uh, and that person is hypothetically a Republican or a Democrat. And the Republican or Democrat uh uh committee. Then seeks to support that person even though they're not running on that line. So the effect of that is that. Um, I I think, and and I mean, it'll be interesting, Hastings, we'll be a good example to see how it plays out.
I I would, that's a worst case scenario, Peter. I think that's.
What is happening all over the place.
Right.
Why did it happen?
But why are so many villages moving to November? Because they want people to learn about the issues. They want to get the time now.
And why is it that they all say after it happened, that isn't the result?
I'd like to hear from those people.
Which is why I I want to say, I mean, look, it's a big country. You'll do what you do.
Wild about.
If you are successful in forcing a referendum now. I I would argue that you're doing that against the broader interests of the community. Instead, this is literally the first time you've come before us to make this request. And are arguing that we need to act on this at our next meeting. In order to meet this deadline, when in fact, I I don't see a reason why. This discussion can't be had more fully and more broadly with full discussion on all sides and do it next year.
I always feel as they say, you know, it's better to just ask forgiveness than uh. Then uh, you know, ask permission. And so I start with, let's get it on the ballot now. And um, I'm willing to discuss this as many times as you want.
So are you, do you mean that you'd be willing to consider not trying to force it on the ballot now?
I'm willing to consider that.
Okay, cuz I.
But I would like to have a reasonable discussion in public about, yeah.
I mean, that's what we're starting with now and I think there's a lot to be said. It's not gonna all be said or or spun out. Which we know in our next meeting, right?
Yep.
I just, I'm not sure what, even even for those who fervently believe this is what we should do. I'm not sure.
Well, as I said, you know, I have ten weeks.
By talking further about it than doing it next year.
You know, I I, as I said, I have ten weeks for the summer that I have free that I can help and do and.
Yeah, you got ten weeks next summer too.
Yeah.
So.
Good Lord willing, as I said.
Yeah.
My willing is to say.
So I I, look, I I obviously, I I I mean, I have quite a bit to say about the issue of of budgeting um. Because I think. It isn't transparently clear that this improves that for a variety of reasons, which we don't need to go into now. If we have the opportunity to talk about it further. I just think people ought to understand what the pros and cons are. Uh, that I I fully agree that if this becomes a referendum, especially a referendum with no context. Uh, it passes easily as it does everywhere because it seemed like, sure, that'll be easier. But folks need to make a decision about that is easier, actually better, i- i- is are we achieving? Our broader goals at the price of X or not, right? So that's, I I think there is no question that there are advantages to it. And I would say, and and you might disagree, that there's no question that there are disadvantages too.
I'm sure, I'm sure. I mean, but I I see more of the advantages. But I do really appreciate you taking the time to have this open discussion.
Did any other board members want to comment?
Yes, Paul, do you have any?
Yeah, um, I think, you know, it's it's definitely a compelling argument for sure, seeing. Um, you know, it was definitely discouraging to see a low turnout, sure. Um, and you always want to get people involved. So I think that to me is the biggest argument is, um, you know, how can we get more people involved? So obviously, this is a solution, a solution of many solutions that could come up. Um. I I do think that this kind of moving it to November might also push. The candidates to be able to campaign more and maybe get to know people more and get out there more. So there's also all those positives. Um, I think the concern that I somewhat share with Peter in ways. Is if if it does become a situation where I can take the same argument you said, if, you know. My son plays track with your son or whatever, the same thing being that if you know. It, most people are generally pretty open about whatever party that they they follow. I mean. It's registered. I mean, they don't talk about it as often. We in this board don't talk about it as often, but I think everyone kind of knows that. So it's an easier thing to immediately have somebody tell you. You know, you go to vote and you have your, you're gonna be voting one row. And then you look at the candidates and you're like, oh, yeah, but this person is also belonging to the party that I normally vote for. So let me just circle that in. In reality, you're not really getting the answer. They're really thinking about the issues or they're just tagging on that extra circle.
I think the six hundred and forty one would be thinking about the party. I think the five thousand two two hundred. Are would would not.
Isn't it just exactly the opposite?
No.
Six hundred and forty one people came to vote in March.
Yeah.
On a specific village election. Those people are not doing that for any party reason. There's no party to vote for. They're doing it either because my kid plays track with your kid or I know you. Or I paid attention to the various media sources and I like that. I like one candidate over the other. It has nothing to do with party. It has far more likely to do with party in November, doesn't it?
I have, I have.
That's why they call it a general election. Oh, hi, David. Um, that's why they call it a general election. You know, it's general. It's everything. David had something to say.
Do you want to say something?
I would definitely like to have more conversation about this. I have some uh feelings that run each way. Definitely think it's difficult to, you know, say, uh, election with under twenty percent turnout is a real democracy and that's. A problem. Um, and I think the question is whether this is the way to fix the problem or not. Right? So on the positive side, yeah, you get a lot more people engaged in the election. Um, and um, I think it also helps certain classes of people who are more likely to be engaged in the general election. So that that could be a positive. Um, on the other hand, I think. I think the problem right now is that we're in a climate where um, it's a citizens united world. And so um, essentially. If there were interest in development in the village or anything like that, now the ability to. Um, if you if you broke a norm and ran in the village election the way that we have it now. And um, a PAC funded a candidate or something like that would be very obvious and. You know, there would be no way of getting getting away from it. But if we look at, there's, you know, an a town that I will not name that's next door to us. Who had, who that runs um elections based on parties, right? And a bunch of people ran and they were running on a local development issue and they ran on one party line. And people voted for them, but they really weren't of that party and they had, you know. What ended up being difficult perspectives and I don't think it was good for that town. So I just. You know, I I think, I think that there's a lot of potentially troubling consequences from pretty good intentions. And I would like to see how this plays out, particularly in Sleepy Hollow. I think it'll be very interesting to see. Um, you know, if those villages go nonpartisan or if they become Democrat Republican. Like for instance, what would happen in Pleasantville? If Democratic Party said, no, we think nonpartisan elections are the way to go in Pleasantville and we don't want to be part of that. And then the Republican Party create, you know, um, put candidates on the ballot and funded them. Right? And now you're gonna get three, four, five mailers and you're gonna see. Um, poster advertising and a bunch of other stuff for Republican candidate. Would the Democratic Party not actually put somebody up then in that case? Or would we expect individuals running for these positions to to self-finance their campaign or raise money? And I just, you know, I wonder if there's a way that we could.
We could regulate that.
How do you regulate?
No, you can't.
Yeah, we can't.
It is not a law. It's not, it's not, it's not a board of election law to have a bipartisan.
Absolutely.
It's a choice.
Abs, it's a choice.
It's a choice. It's a Republican.
Yeah, so so. So I guess like what I'm saying is like, I wonder if, like, I understand why this has happened. And I wonder if we should take, since we don't have an election for a couple of years, whether we should take a pause and try to figure out. If there's ways that we can get our participation up. Without uncorking this bottle, sort of not knowing what's gonna be there, because this is always gonna be available to us. Um, and I think it's, it could be impossible to change back once we've changed it. This is a one-time thing. Um, and and I I know like. The natural thing is to think, well, it'll be good for Democrats because we're mostly democratic community. We have mostly progressive values, blah, 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 but I don't think so. And I don't think that the local issues really. Really fall that way very neatly. And I think it tends to, when you have to run in a local. Village as a Democrat or a Republican, then it tends to lead to a bunch of other. Uh, uh, side effects that are maybe not great for the municipality. And I just don't see, like, I I I get the theory of why this is better. But in reality, it's hard for me to imagine this staying as independent voting for very long. So that that's what I think I'd like to be convinced of, to support it. Because I don't support only twelve percent of villagers voting for sure. I think that's a problem.
Um, I know that Hastings uh changed two years ago and they're very pleased still.
But Hastings is a, is a, they run as Republicans and Democrats or lately they run just as Democrats.
Nikki doesn't.
Absolutely. She runs as a Democrat. It's a, it it the the Democratic Committee.
Not that, well, okay, you know, I I I'm not gonna, it's not the hill I want to die on on that one, but.
Well, I I I I am very fond of Nikki. I I know her quite well. I uh weighed in. Uh, at at their request. On the question of whether they should move to November, as did Peter Swiderski, the former mayor. And both of us were of the view that they should not. But I think, I I don't, it's not my business to characterize the basis for the decision. They decided otherwise and have gone to November. But they they have a very powerful.
Um, but they went, they put a referendum out.
You have to put a referendum out to change.
Yeah.
That that isn't an option, right?
Right. And what you're recommending is that we wait and not put one out this November by.
Well, my my, the point I'm making is.
It deserves more discussion.
Right, if we're respectful of all of these different views. Um, uh, it's worth having that conversation with the community. Uh, and um, I don't see what harm it. Causes to the folks who would like to see this happen to push for a referendum. In twenty twenty five instead of twenty twenty four since. Either year that it potentially is enacted. Would engage the next time there is a village election.
Right.
So I mean, does that seem reasonable?
It, I said before, yes. You know, I think that that's a reasonable compromise. Um, as you know, whatever I do, I do with passion. So um, it's a way to compromise and I'm willing to help. And do whatever needs doing.
So then let's engage that conversation.
Discussion real, you know, and and fair. And I know you will, but who knows who comes to this podium? So it's very important that it stay fair. You know.
But I I appreciate the the time that everyone took, because I think the the issue that you're highlighting is incredibly important. And when the election happened, you know, I myself was very, so like I told you, and I do think that. There's a lot of positives that could come with this and that could also. Um, it it could also really, like I said, enforce the candidates to really push them to really. Get to know the public more.
Yes.
I do think that it's a bit difficult going out there in the winter and trying to go see people's homes and knocking on doors in February. It's a, it's a tough thing to do and a lot of people wouldn't want to let you in because it's cold. So. You know, there's, there's a lot of those things and I think that it can also push us as candidates to be able to be better to campaign more. Um, I, and then it it's it's such a, that's why this is such a good thing to put more to discussion. You don't have to make a rash decision quickly. We do have to really. We do have to really think about it, weigh all the pros and cons. I do also think, you know, there's, it's it's been tough to get candidates. I mean, at one point, you know, as you said, there's, there was two elections that we had, we didn't even have candidates.
Right.
Um, I don't know if us having that in November changes things or if it makes people think I I don't want to run in that kind of level. I don't want to be associated with something so big because I kind of, you know, so that's, that's another thing to kind of consider that we'd have to to just kind of see what the public, you know. I can tell you for me, myself, and this would impact me directly because I need the last election that it's going to happen. So I'm essentially going to be running more than, I mean, doing my term more than it would have been because I would go all the way to the following November. For me, I can tell you, I'm a poly-sci. So I I I'm okay with these kind of things, these kind of moves. I'm not afraid to go out and talk to people. Uh, but I know there's a lot of also our neighbors that are more focused on a smaller voice, but a very strong voice on on opinions that they have on on issues that are really important that affect many of us. So, you know, that's also a fear that I have that someone could think this is too big and maybe discouraged from wanting to be in in this kind of election, these politics, because they're getting kind of put together with these bigger elections. So just something to think about. But I I do without a doubt appreciate that you're focusing some light on the serious problem that we have. And I think that, you know, we have the time and and the resources to really work together on how to make this better and possibly, as as David said, come up. If this is the best solution, then it is, but we should explore what other options we have as well before we make such a big change.
All right. Thank you very much.
You want to add a thought?
Yeah.
Yes, uh, uh, sorry. Yeah, yeah. I wanted to chime in. Uh, yeah, thanks for coming tonight, everyone. And I I think it really shows you could see, being the newest person, I would say on the board, what I see the most is the people that come out to the meetings are the people with the most like passion for the village. And they're really are the people that are willing to push these issues forward. Um, I would say that I probably err on the side of of getting the data more of how the other towns that have changed over, how it worked for them, um, and presenting that hopefully to our next session. And what changed, maybe even interviewing some of the other villagers or people that we know from those towns, if they noticed a difference. Um, but I would say that I'd probably want to wait to see with that information. That's, that's my chime in.
Thanks, Amy. Yes, welcome back.
Hi. Um, I think we can all agree that what we're talking about is not an urgent matter. It's something to be considered. Uh, I think it'll be, I I would like the board to have time to do a little research, uh, see what the voter participation was, not just in this past year, but going back a few years.
Correct.
Uh, what that percentage was and take the, and also to talk to other villages who I think what we all treasure is that this, the nonpartisan uh way of running has worked for Pleasantville. And that's a precious thing and we want to hold on to that. The question is, is there a way of getting greater participation of the voters?
Right.
And still keeping none what we have, the jewel that we have.
Right.
And that's.
That's the question.
That's the, you know, putting our heads together.
Yeah.
Can we figure out, you know, move, move this, move the participation greater, but keep the nonpartisan thing that we have, which is important to keep. We look down the national level and it's just.
Oh, my God.
Nobody wants that.
Oh, my God.
Nobody wants that.
I wholeheartedly agree with what you just said.
Yeah.
Okay. So thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. Anybody else have any further comment? Then we'll, we'll move on, but then I'll reach out. Francesca, you're sort of the
You know how to get a hold.
de facto leader of this band. So let's, let's uh have a chat about how to start exploring the issue.
Thank you so much. Really brilliant thing for folks in Holland as well.
And thanks to all of you. Appreciate it.
Call somewhere fun. Anyway.
So.
Thank you for your contact.
Come see us. All right, back to uh.
To the fun stuff.
Well, I don't know how fun it is. The uh, let me circle back to uh a few other announcements to make, um, as I, as already mentioned. Uh, Pleasantville Music Festival this coming Saturday, uh, July thirteenth, PleasantvilleMusicFestival.com. Uh, please read about it, sign up, buy a ticket. That would be very, very, very uh much appreciated. It's one of the best days of the year uh in a thousand ways and uh we need support to make it happen. And as I have said a few times in the past, a shout out to Northwell Health, which for the third consecutive year is signed on our as our presenting sponsor. Northwell is the owner and operator of both Phelps Hospital in Sleepy Hollow and Northern Westchester in Mount Kisco. Uh, the two community hospitals closest to us, so couldn't be a more appropriate presenting sponsor. Thank you again to uh Northwell Health. The Chamber of Commerce uh uh assembled a list that simplified my task uh to send a shout out to the zillions of Pleasantville and Pleasantville Chamber members uh who were honored in the annual Best of Westchester. Um, and I'll just zip through them, not calling out the categories, but all of these Pleasantville and nearby uh businesses were uh awarded Best of Westchester, Crawdaddy's Creole Kitchen, Fleetwood Bakery, Southern Table, Captain Lawrence Barrel House, Captain Lawrence Brewery, The Taco Project, Second Mouse Cheese Shop, uh, The Barley House over in Thornwood, Pleasantville Farmers Market, twelfth consecutive year best uh uh in Pleasantville. Um, uh, Pleasantville Music Festival, Best Fun and Leisure, uh Soul Brewing, Rockefeller State Park, uh Mike Risco Band, Jacob Burns Film Center, uh Rocket River State Park Reserve, Arc Stages, uh Eye Fetish Optique, The Village Bookstore, uh Pro Clinic Sports Physical Therapy, uh Spavia, Breaking Ground Dance School, uh and uh our nearby neighbor Burg, Burgers Hardware, uh, The Zwilling and The Zwilling Cooking Studio. So all of those are either Pleasantville businesses or or members of the Pleasantville uh Chamber of Commerce, uh Pleasantville is Rocket. It's.
Yeah, we're really excited that, you know, every year these awards are really special to every one of these businesses because they, you know, everyone knows about them and it's, it's, it's great pride for our village that we have so many great businesses that are either in the village or in our chamber and they these, these businesses not only are are, we should be proud of, but we're so thankful to them. Because if you look at all the different um groups that really asked for donations, sports teams or organizations, you can go to any of these restaurants that were named here, different businesses, and they're the first ones to always donate something. So I think it's something incredibly special that they get honored as well. And I'm very proud of every one of these um businesses that have been able to do all this accomplishment, because there's a lot of, lot of these kind of businesses all over Westchester. So I think this is really great for us.
Likewise. Um, well, you're talking about matters of that sort. Why don't you report on the block party again? The more times we say it, the more likely people are to save the date.
So the block party is scheduled for September twenty-first. Um, this will be, this will be kind of like we've been doing this kind of event on the third year where we close Wheeler Avenue. This is going to be on a Saturday. We close Wheeler Avenue and we also close Washington Avenue. On Washington Avenue between one and six, we have a a car show with a couple of other vendors there. And on Wheeler Avenue, we have a lot of vendors with a kids zone. Uh, it's a great time to come out. It's um a lot of the different businesses going back, sponsored these, this event specifically that we're able to get things like fun time to come do rides for the kids. So it's something that we're really looking forward to. Rain um date will be the following week on September twenty-eighth. Um, we are, the Chamber of Commerce this Wednesday is having a multi-chamber event with many different chambers from all around Westchester. Here in Pleasantville, we have, I think, over fifty people that are registered to be there. This will be a really good event. Um, we're going to be bringing out our sponsorship tiers that day so that anyone that wants to be a sponsor and if any business wants to be a sponsor, please communicate with us. Obviously, the more that we get sponsors, the more that we're able to give to our community uh free of charge for something that, you know, it's just to give back to the community total. So really excited about the event. And um if anyone has any questions, please feel free to reach out. I'm the liaison to the Chamber of Commerce and also the vice president of the Chamber of Commerce as well. Um, as a resident here, also a business owner, I think it's, it's a good fusion that helps me have a knee to the ground on both of these issues.
Thank you, sir. Um, circling back to some uh uh weighty matters. As many of you know, we had an extended conversation and have had multiple extended conversations with folks about uh the situation at the Grant Street uh Sawmill Parkway intersection, as 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 many of us are already aware, a tragic accident uh occurred there with uh someone who blew through a red light and and caused a very serious collision with significant injuries, called a Pleasantville resident. Um, we continue our engagement with Region Eight Department of Transportation, which is the region that uh is responsible for that intersection. Uh, Sawmill being a state roadway, um, uh with Yami's assistance, uh after an accident that involved her family uh a year ago, uh we made a series of proposals to uh the State Department of Transportation and none of which have, or or, uh, none of the more substantive ones have been accepted. We've re-engaged that conversation again and have engaged both our state senator and restrict cousins and our uh assembly person, um Mary Jane Shimskey and are uh pushing hard to get a face-to-face meeting to talk about what can be done. Um, uh, I will also add to that, that in the course of the public meeting, uh, when so many folks came to talk to us, there was a, a uh substantially more people interested in talking about closing that intersection. Uh, since then, I've certainly had some feedback and perhaps others of us have both ways on that. Uh, but I can certainly report that the idea of closing that intersection would achieve obviously a safety improvement in an intersection that by definition is challenging. Uh, but it would also have a series of other effects about traffic and circulation in the village uh that would have to be thought about carefully. So uh more on that, uh, we're uh on the case with DOT on that issue as well as as our other uh issue, uh, which is uh the completion of our pedestrian improvement project. Uh, as you all can see, the corner by the war monuments uh at Manville and Memorial Plaza has been torn up ever since the beginning of May. Um, when uh the foundation around the pole that holds the span wire that holds the traffic lights uh was found to be uh different from what we expected. That engendered a month-long back and forth with Department of Transportation, uh, the result of which finally is that uh i- in the view of some, we're ending up with an over-engineered solution, but a solution nonetheless. Uh, now we have to get the contractor back for perfectly understandable reasons. They departed when there was no way to move forward absent a solution uh that was okay with the Department of Transportation. They moved on about the things. Now we're trying to get them back. We have uh uh a winning bidder for the next phase of the project, which is the uh civic space that would be associated with the closing of the slip lane, the elbow lane in front of the war monuments. Uh, that project and its schedule obviously affected by completing this other work. Horrifyingly frustrating. We were two to three weeks away from the whole thing being finished and would be uh uh right now in a very different circumstance and instead are uh stuck dead in the water. I can assure you that uh this is being talked about literally every day. Eric is spending way too much of his time fighting through all these issues and I thank you for that. Um, frustrating circumstance, hopefully we'll have better news to report soon. I will say uh doing good things is really important. Uh, anybody else have something to announce or a comment to make? Any further comment from the public on any other subject? All right. There being none, let me make sure there wasn't somebody on Zoom. I don't see any raised hands. All right, with that, uh, we will go to uh the first matter on our agenda, which is, uh, is there a motion to open a public hearing to amend chapter one seventy-three of the Village of Pleasantville Code to make fifteen-minute time limited parking Monday through Saturday from eight AM to six PM on the east side of Wheeler Avenue between Bedford Road and Manville Road. So is there a second?
Second.
Uh, all right, welcome to a public hearing. A pretty simple story, as many of you know, the parallel parking, a curbed side parking all along Wheeler Avenue has for, I think, uh twenty-ish years, been marked five-minute parking all hours, all days. Um, that, uh, the intention way, way back when was that it would provide transient in-and-out parking, jump out of your car, get coffee, jump back in your car and go. Um, I can tell you in the current environment, as all of us know, uh, that it has been hard to enforce and I think arguably fi- five minutes is too short. Uh, but we also need to enforce it more because we are certainly seeing, and I get complaints fairly often about cars that are parked there way longer than five minutes, sometimes way longer than five hours. Um, uh, the matter of enforcing it is is difficult since you don't have a meter uh to use. So the idea here is to say fifteen minutes, not five, and that we would enforce this eight AM to six PM and so that after six PM uh and on Sundays, there would be no requirement to get parked there as long as you want. Uh, that I think is a benefit to the restaurants at night and that honestly is the way it's been working for quite a long time anyway. So uh, have I accurately described that, Mr. Morrissey? Can you sum that up? All right. Any comment from a member of the board on this subject?
No, I just, I agree with this and I think that uh it will free up people in the evening to uh be able to park for their evening plans without worrying.
Well, and 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 I I uh agree also, I mean, part of what's we're going to have to change a little bit of the culture, which is it says five minutes, all hours, all days, but I I know if I park here, my odds of getting a ticket are pretty low. So uh we need to start enforcing that more and we will. And we're trying to make a reasonable fifteen-minute time period so that parking has the turnover uh to make it possible. So is there any comment from anyone in the room or anyone on Zoom on this subject? There being none, is there a motion to close the public hearing? So, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we have departed the public hearing. All right, now we'll head to our resolutions. Let me share my screen. We have to open up this window more widely to achieve. There we go. All right, uh, poll number two forty-two.
Whereas introductory law, local law five of two thousand twenty-four has been introduced to amend chapter one seventy-three of the Village of Pleasantville Code, we are in the parking time limit on Wheeler Avenue between Bedford Road and Manville Road. And whereas a public hearing concerning introductory local law five of two thousand twenty-four was held on July eighth, two thousand twenty-four and closed on July eighth, two thousand twenty-four. And now therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby adopts local law five of two thousand twenty-four.
Is there a second?
Second.
So obviously, this is the same matter we just discussed in the public hearing, which there was no comment. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. So when that local law is filed with the state, we'll change the signing and then we'll get out a messaging program that we're going to start enforcing this uh and hope that everybody can participate in making this work better on Wheeler Avenue. Two forty-three. David?
Resolve the Board of Trustees hereby approves the creation of a capital account for the purpose of the installation of panic buttons in Village Hall and the transfer of thirty thousand dollars from the fund balance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Eric, this is an upgrade to an AG system.
Yes, so right now Village Hall uh administrative offices have uh panic buttons. They are outdated. Um, so we're going to update those and then also bring in the senior center, um, rec center and eventually D P W. It's one.
Uh, Eric, is it true that because uh you work remotely from home sometimes, that one of those is going into your family room?
I could use it. We'll have to look into that.
All right. Um, so I I I certainly support this. It's painful that it is a necessary precaution and uh we don't do this because of uh some, some known risk, but by the same token, as you might imagine, uh, folks occasionally get exercised in uh over an issue and um if that were to happen in any of our village offices, our employees wouldn't need to be able to reach out for help successfully. So.
Yeah.
Other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. Yami, two forty-four.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the transfer of a hundred thousand dollars from Fund Balance A nine nine five zero point nine zero one to Bedford Road Traffic Light Improvement, H five one eight two point zero two zero one slash two four five ten.
Is there a second?
Second.
So this is the, the next expensive piece of, of a. So this is the, the next expensive piece of, of a project that's been going on for almost a year uh, to try to address the fact that our traffic lights along, uh, Bedford Road, uh, are not functioning appropriately. They're not, uh, working right for the individual streets, and they're not working right, uh, relative to one another to keep traffic moving, but also to maintain pedestrian safety. Uh, we have DTS Providence do an extended study, uh, and have hundreds of pages of data, and anyone who's interested in it, uh, we have a number of public presentations that were made, they're available in in the Zoom videos at PCTV seven six dot org, uh, a quite interesting um, modeling about what can happen if you make various changes. This last piece is to spend uh, almost a hundred thousand dollars to upgrade the physical equipment to include uh, cameras and sensors that will allow the lights to correspond and communicate to one another, so that one light understands the other.
I feel like we need that on the sawmill, but yeah, that's.
Yeah, right, that's the next argument to have. So, um, uh, folks have said to me, and perfectly understandably, I've said to myself, why, this seems like it would be easy to fix. Uh, uh, why isn't it already fixed? And it turns out, A, it's, it's more complicated to fix than one might first imagine. But secondly, you can't just tinker with these things, you need a traffic study to support it in order to, uh, get the rights to make the change. And then after the traffic study and the analysis of what could be done and how it could be made better, here we are spending a hundred thousand dollars to buy this equipment, uh, all in service of making this whole system look better, so. I can assure you, it's frustrating to us that it takes as long as it does, uh, but I can also assure you that I think we're doing the right thing and help is on the way. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion approved, back to you, Paul, two forty-five.
Resolve that board of trustees hereby approves the creation of capital account for the lead service line inventory project and authorize a transfer of two hundred and ten thousand dollars from the water fund balance F nine nine five zero point nine zero one.
Is there a second?
Second.
So we had an extended conversation about this, again, it's in the Zoom meetings from our last meeting, right?
Yes.
Uh, uh, the short version of, of a long story, and what you will hear more about, is that all governments, uh, are required by uh, the EPA to analyze, uh, lead service line inventory, uh, so that we can determine where we have the potential, uh, for contaminants to be reaching into water. We have a very pure source of water coming from the jointly owned, uh, water plant that we, uh, are a minority owner in with the town of Newcastle, but that water is making its way through many different pipes and, and frequently into people's houses. Uh, and this, uh, expensive venture, uh, for which we hired a consultant last, uh, meeting, uh, we'll start to explore that, and you will all hear more about that coming forward, so, uh, as reported in the analysis, this comes out of our water fund, uh, which is a, uh, separate from a property tax fund. The water fund is funded by, uh, your water bills, and it serves a broader region than just village residents because our water system reaches outside the village border, so. More on that, stay tuned, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved, David, two forty-six.
Resolve the board of trustees hereby approves the following budget amendments from, for fiscal year twenty twenty-five is listed below. A hundred thousand transferred to capital for the Bedford, uh, traffic light improvement project. Two hundred and ten thousand dollars transferred to capital for the lead service line inventory. Two, sorry, it's two hundred and ten thousand, and then thirty thousand dollars. Uh, increase in revenue expense capital fund, uh, for an inter-fund transfer from general for the panic button update project. Hundred thousand dollars increase in revenue expense capital fund uh, for inter-fund transfer from the general fund for the Bedford Road traffic light improvement project and two hundred and ten thousand dollars, uh, inter-fund transfer from general fund to the lead service line inventory project for a total of three hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Is there a second?
Aye.
These are the accounting steps required to fund the things we just talked about. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved, Yami, two forty-seven.
Resolve that the board of trustees hereby approves the abstract for payment of claims dated July eighth, twenty twenty-four for fiscal year twenty twenty-four and check number is one 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 four one two dash one 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 four two seven. General fund thirteen thousand five hundred eighty-four dollars and forty-seven cents. Water fund a hundred and fifty-three thousand nine hundred forty dollars and eighty-two cents totaling a hundred and sixty-seven, five hundred twenty-five dollars and twenty-nine cents. And there's a.
Do you got a second?
Second.
A payment of claims attached, as is always the case, uh, it's just an actual accident of scheduling, but it always pleases me to have a small number. All in favor?
Aye.
I motion approve, back to you, Paul, two forty.
Resolve the board of trustees hereby approves the ask chart for payment of claims dated July eight, two thousand twenty-four for the fiscal year of two thousand twenty-five and check numbers one 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 four two eight through one 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 five four two. General fund two hundred eighty-three thousand four hundred eighty-five and fifty-one cents. Water fund eleven thousand two hundred eighty-seven and eighty-four cents. Refuge fund ten thousand sixty-two and sixteen cents for a total of three hundred and four thousand eight hundred thirty-five and fifty-one cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
So as is always the case, the other shoe drops, spending more money in the current fiscal year. Comments, questions on the payment of claims? All in favor?
Aye.
I motion approved, two forty-nine, David.
So, sorry, for the, not this last one, we did the one before, that was basically using the money we had left over in last year's fiscal year general fund to pay for some of these current expenses.
Well, I mean, they, they, they are expenses that accrue to that fiscal year ending March, uh, May thirty, twenty twenty-four.
Right, we're just getting invoiced for the, the previous fiscal year.
The Bedford.
By the expenses.
Traffic lights, the.
Oh, for that? Right? Are you talking about the budget amendments?
Yeah.
This one?
Oh, that's.
That I have on the screen now?
Sorry, I thought that was twenty twenty-four, okay, got it.
Yeah, so those are, yeah, those are budget amendments, uh, for expenses we've committed to but haven't spent yet.
And just FYI, when capital accounts are created, capital accounts can live on from fiscal year to fiscal year.
Okay.
As they, as they need to, right? Alright, uh, did we vote on that payment of claims?
Yeah.
We did, I thought we did, okay. Two forty-nine, David.
All the board trustees hereby accepts a resignation of, uh, Jeffrey Oscealo, community, community service worker effective July thirteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, we appreciate Jeff's service, wish him well in his next job, all in favor?
Aye.
I motion approved. Two fifty, back to.
I think it's Yami, right?
Yeah, that's me.
Oh, I'm sorry, Yami, yes.
Okay, two fifty, uh, resolve that the board of trustees hereby accepts the donation from the Pleasantville Rotary Club in the amount of five thousand seven hundred sixty-four dollars and four cents. The purposes of the Pleasantville Recreation Camp Scholarship Program.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, a big shout out to the Rotary Club for this big contribution, uh, and a big shout out to every one of them, but uh, especially to Henry Leva, who's, uh, very much involved in the Rotary Club, a former president, uh, for having spearheaded this effort. Uh, very much appreciated not only by us, but, but certainly by the kids and families who benefit from it. All in favor?
Aye.
I motion approved, now back to Paul, two fifty.
Resolve the village board of trustees hereby reserves the parking in the Hobby Street parking lot on Saturday, June thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four. From six AM to nine, this should be July thirteenth?
Sorry, July.
Okay, uh, from ended as July thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four, from six AM to nine PM, and waves parking meter fees.
Is there a second?
Second.
What do we mean by reserves?
Uh, we're going to keep those for Hopper Street residents, um.
For, uh, uh, affecting, correct. Okay, so that's great, and a nice way to try to help out those families and and residents who are, uh, obviously living right in the middle of the music festival, so, all in favor?
Aye.
I motion approved. David, two fifty-two, the last one on our list.
Resolve the board of trustees hereby authorizes the village administrator to sign an agreement with E N Power for the purpose of an en- energy audit for village-owned buildings in the amount of nine thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, I think self-explanatory, but anyone who, who, uh, is interested, we had an extended conversation, presentation by Seth Gladstone, who's been working uh, really hard on this, along with trustee Nicole Asquith. Uh, so there's quite a bit of detail, if you're interested in what this is, is all about, you can go back to the, uh, work session uh, that, uh, preceded our regular meeting tonight, which will be up at PCTV seven six dot org, uh, within not too many days. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I motion approved, that is the last of our, uh, regular session items. Any new business from anybody? Any further comment of any sort on any subject from a member of the public? There being none, uh, is there a motion to go into executive session uh, to discuss personnel real property and contractual matters?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, uh, we thank you all, uh, we certainly thank the folks who began the conversation about the election dates. Uh, more on that soon, uh, as reported at the outset, our, our next regular meeting is in two weeks on July twenty-two. Uh, with that, we will depart our regular meeting and disappear into executive session. Thank you so much.
Thank you.